All right, good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, January 17th. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
For the regions of Southland, of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Would you please read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. We ask anyone who would like to participate to keep their comments to three minutes or less. And if you're here to participate or have comments about King Richard's Fair, I ask that you hold your thoughts until a little bit later. We have a separate round of citizens' participation specifically put aside for King Richard's Fair. So with that, is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Ma'am?
Hi. I'm Jo Bedling, 277 Meadow Street. This issue that we seem to be having with the sand mining and all the sand being dug. Each and every cubic yard of sand that's being removed is lessening the filter for the water. I've had my well tested. I am positive for PFAS. I was not expecting it, given I'm at the other end of town, away from North Carver, away from the dump that was capped off, away from the other contaminated wells. Personally, I'd like to blame the town for allowing so many permits to be allowed for all this digging of the sand. I mean, it's just crazy. It's got to stop. I'd like to explain this, but I don't really understand much more than the results. Mary can explain it to you better than I can, but all this sand mining needs to stop. It's putting all of us in town at risk. I mean, what do we have to do? Am I going to have to pay thousands of dollars now for another filtration system for my house, which I don't really want to pay for? I've already got one in there that went in six years ago. And now the PFAS here. That's my rent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Dormar?
Mary Dormar, 162 Pymon Street. As you know, Mark, I sent the board an email asking for us to be put on the agenda to speak about the 40B over at Edoville. And it was not on the agenda for today, so I would like for a public hearing to be held as quickly as possible because there are a lot of people in town that would like to have a discussion with this board about what is the by right? How many units are allowed to go in by right? And how many units are being asked for? I do not believe that we should have 336 units over there. There's issues with, there's a lot of contaminated water over there. There's an issue with our air safety, especially fire. Are they going to be able to handle any fires over there, especially with the climate change and how susceptible Miles Standage is to forest fires and stuff? There's a lot of things to consider, and we do not have the resources for it. So I would like a commitment from this board saying that there will be a public hearing on the Edoville 40B as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Dormar.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Fennessey, do you want to comment at all on the subject of the public hearing?
Okay, so 40B, the only hearing, public hearing, a hearing, comes out of the ZBA, not the Board of Selectmen. They don't have the authority to have a hearing. If you're talking, Mary, if you're talking about a meeting where, you know, the public can come in and speak at a meeting, board will not, cannot make an up or down vote on a 40B. I mean, you're shaking your head, but that's the law. I don't want to really engage unless you're at the mic.
That's completely inaccurate.
Okay.
John Daley came in front of you guys last week, and he said that we can do this nice or we can do this un-nice. And he came in front of the select board for a reason. So it's up to the select board to say whether or not you're going to support the 336 units or you're going to let him do it by right.
Right.
And I think the majority-
That's correct. That's not what I was saying. I was saying about a public hearing and about a vote up or down on the project, like shutting it down or not shutting it down.
Well, that's gonna-
Let me finish. The only ones that have that authority is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Right.
And the zoning board of appeals would be the mechanism to have that hearing, the public hearing. And that will happen once it gets to that stage.
But that's not what we're asking for. What we're asking for is the meeting with the select board so that we can have a discussion on whether or not they are going to support 336 units or the by right of 200.
Okay.
And I think that the majority of the residents in town are going to say, let them take their chances with the state and let them get the 200 units by right. And then we'll call the DEP in, and then we'll see that they can't do it because of all the contamination of PFAS within the town of Carver. That, by the way, under the sole source aquifer and the designation, and I'm sure Sarah can speak to this, under the designation by the EPA, we are responsible for all of that contamination. There's 500 million gallons, and that's over seven towns. That's not a lot of water. So you put another 336 units, guess what? That's more contamination. And the fact that it's 40B, that's a protected class. So we have to be more careful to make sure that that water over there is not contaminated. It's okay for the rest of us to have contaminated water.
And all that would be looked at through the ZBA and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
And it would only be looked at through the ZBA if the select board says we're going to go along with the 336 units. And what I'm saying to you is, we want a meeting that says that we want to talk to the select board, the people that we elected that are here to do our bidding, essentially, to say, don't play nice.
Okay. And what I was hearing you say is that you wanted a public hearing. So I think that's the difference.
Well, I don't know how else. I'm going to get the select board to engage in a conversation with us except as a public hearing. Because this, citizens' petition, does not work. And every time that we ask to be put on the agenda, we're ignored.
So may I ask Mr. Fennessey a quick question? So my understanding is that, as a board, we don't have the authority to have a public hearing over a 40B project. It's only the ZBA that can have the public hearing?
Correct.
We can have, these are meetings. These are public meetings.
We can have informational meetings.
But we can't actually have the public hearing. It has to be with the zoning board. Is that-
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And I believe that's inaccurate.
And I think that that's true, isn't it? Regardless of whether we do the 344 friendly 40B or the 200 unfriendly?
And Mary is correct that the board would have an impact on whether you want to engage and enter into an agreement. And it's called a LIP, Local Initiative Petition, kind of a friendly 40B, where concessions can be made to the town by the developer. And if the town's happy with that, then they can enter into an agreement with the developer to then process it as a friendly 40B. The words friendly and unfriendly, it's kind of strange to use those words, but it just gives the impression that an unfriendly is still a 40B. It's still, like you said, it's 225 units.
I think, folks, we're getting a little bit on citizens' participation here and more into an agenda item which is not on the agenda. So I think we'll-
So essentially, what we would like is to be put on the agenda so that we can have this discussion with the select board as soon as possible. Because this is very important. And if what you're saying is true, which I do not believe it is, I believe that my interpretation of this is correct, that yes, it has to go in front of the ZBA, but the ZBA has a different purview. Whether or not this is, whether or not this goes for 336 or 200 units is solely up to the select board.
Correct. I agree with you.
That is right. And that's exactly what I asked for.
Thank you, Mrs. Dormar. Is there anyone else? All right, moving along. Our 610 item, we have a liquor license hearing with the Treat Restaurant Group, LLC, doing businesses Cornerstones, 96 North Main Street, for a transfer of their liquor license. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Cornerstones? Sir? Just your name and a desk for the record, please.
My name's Robert Harriman.
And your address?
139 Long Water Drive, Hanover, Mass., 02339.
All right. And would you like to tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
Yeah, I was approached by Mr. King about purchasing his restaurant a few months back. And we came to an agreement. So I started the process. And my attorney, unfortunately, couldn't make it today. He had probably a commitment, but I'm just looking to take it over and keep it pretty much the same, keep the staff, you know, clean it up where need be and kind of just go as the flow.
So the staff is not changing? The staff is staying the same?
I'm looking to keep everybody.
All right. Other questions from the board?
No, I just wanted to say I think the staff will appreciate that.
No, yeah, definitely. And that's, I've been in the restaurant business 30-plus years, and this is just a new adventure. And I've always wanted to have my own place. And like I said, Mr. King approached me about doing, you know, making a deal, and we did. And looking forward to doing business in town for many years to come.
Thank you. Anything else? Good morning? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Just a question. So can you explain your experience in the service of alcohol to the public?
Yeah, I've been a minority owner of three restaurants for the past 12 years. I'm a chef at trade, but I bartended. I did front of the house management. I've done a little bit of everything.
So have you been tip certified?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the transfer of license for Treat Restaurant Group, LLC, DBA Cornerstones, 96 North Main Street.
Second that.
You have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have several items that involve the town clerk. So Ms. Dayhill, if you'd like to step up. And the first item on our agenda is to set the date and the hours for local town election on April 22nd, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Ms. Dayhill, if you'd like to speak to this. It's a little bit different from our normal hours, correct?
It's slightly. It's just off by an hour. We figured that holding it from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. would be overkill, considering that historically just under 1,000 residents show up to vote in a local election. And we understand that we might have a question this year on the ballot, and we may be taking a little more time than usual with the election workers to finalize the tally. So we figured we could use that hour for that, if that's acceptable.
All right. Other questions from the board?
Yeah. I, it always scares me when we cut the hours back because people are so used to 6 o'clock. So hopefully, there'll be a mechanism that you can find to really get the word out.
Yes, yeah. It's 8 to 5, as opposed to 8 to 6. So it's on a Saturday that that really helps, too. Absentee ballots will be available for anyone that wants to vote absentee that qualifies at the front desk or by mail. So if someone's not going to be here, being school vacation week, of course, they're able to take advantage of that.
I just want to say, I do agree with Ms. Yewens. I think changing the hours from 8 to 6 to 8 to 5, it's a small change. And I understand why you're doing it. But I do think there are people who are used to getting there close to 6 o'clock. And I think we have to do everything we can to be proactive in getting the change out there to make sure everybody knows.
Okay. No, we will advertise if you're in agreeance to that.
Yeah, I think any way we can, via social media or whatever.
Okay.
I think it's just important to get that out there. Is there anything else from the board?
Well, I guess to you and Sarah, if there's a major concern about getting the word out, the fire department's been super helpful with promoting stuff before with the yard sale. And then you could probably talk to the school, too.
Yep. It'll be posted on their digital boards. And, yeah, that'd be great.
She's been nothing but a phenomenal town clerk. When she thinks there should be a change, I trust her.
And I think the fire department-
Oh, I do, too. There's no question.
Has always put the hours of time, everything out there.
Yes.
Oh, there's no question I'm not trusting you.
Thank you.
You have been terrific. I just am concerned because I know I see people screeching up at 5 of 6 in the past.
Right.
All right. Anything else? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the date and hours for the local town election. Day is April 22nd, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. And next, we have a couple of different items. One is to approval to opt out of vote by mail option for the annual town election scheduled for April 22nd, 2023. And then after that, we have an item, obviously, to opt in. I know you have some feelings on this.
Sure. So I invited my fellow registrar, Maureen, to come with me. I reached out to all three of the other registrars to get their input. Now, this is on the second portion of opting in for early voting, where the consensus that we share is that to opt in for in-person early voting would be probably a waste of money for the town to participate in that. With the attendance of early voting that we have as a requirement in state elections, we see such a poor turnout. And to do it for a local election where we've never done it before, not only would we be setting a precedent that we would have to follow for each and every, but the town bears that expense completely. So you're looking at somewhere between $8 to $10 a ballot that it would cost the town to offer that service. And again, we would always offer absentee voting either at the counter or through the mail, should someone need that, being a school vacation week especially.
So for state and federal elections, we get reimbursed?
We do get reimbursed, and it's a requirement. So when this new Vote Act came about last year, we had to make some changes. And the state pretty much, not saying that they don't care about our local elections, but they're not going to mandate this. So this is why we're here in front of you, because it's an option, and you could choose to opt in for that. With the vote by mail, they're asking whether or not you want to opt out. During all of our other elections, it's going to be a requirement. It's going to be mandated that we do. But they do help us with some of that expense on this hand. It would be 100% on us to pay for that. So you're looking at mailing an application to over 9,000 registered voters. So the expense of each of those. And then if the application isn't filled out correctly, we would have to mail them another application. So the expense could just be absolutely phenomenal. And again, with ballots, they could call and say they didn't receive it, and then we would have to mail them yet another ballot. So I can't even give you a reasonable figure on what that would cost us as a town. All I know is it would be very expensive.
So the recommendation from the town clerk's office is to opt out of the vote?
Opt out of the vote by mail and not opt in for the early voting. I just don't see it being feasible, and neither do my fellow registrars.
Well, the early voting as well, that would be tough because we have town meetings.
We have it. It's a very short window. I provided you guys with just a little summary of the email that I sent to my registrars so that you would have a background on it, since we didn't have a chance to have a lot of discussion. If you got a chance to read that, you'll see some of the reasoning that we came up together with that just doesn't really make it sound like a good feasible idea.
Other questions from the board on this?
Yeah. So just to be clear, Ms. Dayhill, you recommend that we opt out of the vote by mail option?
Yep. You're going to take two votes. So the first will be an opt-out of vote by mail. And then the second one is a little trick on words. They want you to opt in, and you're going to choose not to opt in for the early voting, if that's your decision. That's what we're recommending.
And you will keep all the absentee voting?
Absentee will be the thing. That's, I think it's a pretty popular thing with these elections always happening during school vacation week. I think people are used to that. We try to, like you said before, we try not to change too many of those things that people are used to, so that way they know that. And we should advertise that as well in advance to get our, maybe our voting attendance up a little bit for those that want to vote.
Okay.
Sure. All right. Are there any other questions from the board on the approval to opt out of vote by mail option? If there are none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to vote to opt out of the vote by mail option for the annual town election scheduled for April 22nd, 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Now, on the second question, the approval to opt in for in-person early voting.
I make a motion that we approve to not opt in for in-person early voting for the annual town election. Correct?
Yes, that's it.
Well, because the agenda says approval to opt in, and I think we left out the word "not."
Mr. Fennessey, is that-
That's fine. Yep.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
We have the motion. So do we-
The thought process for going early would be really for, isn't it, larger communities where the turnout is so large and significant that they need to get ahead of the curve?
Yeah. It's a convenience. By what we saw in the primary and the general election, though, our numbers were so low that we could actually give you an average of what it costs for each ballot that we allowed someone to vote with. So it was anywhere between $8 and $10 a person that it cost the town to provide election workers to sit and offer that service. And as Mr. Townsend said, there's such a short window between town meeting. We don't know if town meeting will be over with on the 11th or if we'll continue on. We have just under a week in between with a lot of prep work, the same prep work, no matter what election you do, to be ready for that election. So we thought that it probably wasn't going to be a financially fiscal, good idea for the town. And time-wise, it would be very difficult to probably, you know, pull off.
All right. So Mr. Fennessey or Shelby, could you read back the motion?
Yeah. Motion to approve to not opt in for in-person early voting.
So I just have a question. So if we're not going to opt in, why do we have to do anything?
Well, because it's part of the state vote, the new Vote Act. So they require you with this language for you guys to have this. So when we get ready to do our presidential primary in February of next year, you guys are going to sit around. You're going to take some more votes. One of them will be to appoint officers for the election. During the local, we don't have to do that. But these are new things in that new Vote Act that we have to do. So one of the requirements were that I confer with my registrars and that based on the recommendation of two of us, that it be brought to you guys, and we would recommend either to participate or not participate in it. So you have our recommendation for it. But it's part of the new Vote Act that you guys have that, to take that vote to decide as a community whether or not you want to offer that and shoulder that expense. Because the state won't reimburse you on this one.
Okay. It just seems kind of, if you don't opt in, that means-
Yeah. We could have just ignored it, but somebody would say, you know, you were supposed to either opt in or, you know, you have to take a vote. So that way you are aware of it. Yeah.
Just asking.
We have a motion and a, we do have a second, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, no. I want to say that papers will be available on Tuesday, January 31st. I posted the listing of offices this evening. It's on the town website. And I hope to see a good turnout of people coming to take up papers for office.
Thank you and your office for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. Thank my registrars, too. Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we have the approval of a ballot question for the annual town election. The question is, shall the town of Carver revoke its acceptance The question is, shall the town of Carver revoke its acceptance of Chapter 31 of the General Laws, the civil service law for all positions in the police department? Chief Dufry? Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, thank you for having me. As always, it's a pleasure. So, you might wonder why we're here tonight on this question, since we talked about this at town meeting last year. I wrote down a few words, if you don't mind, I'll read them first, just because it's an important topic, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. Is that okay? Fine. So thank you again for a few minutes of your time to discuss this matter of approving a ballot question for annual town election to remove the police department from civil service. If you recall, last April at town meeting, the voters approved an article to remove the town of Carver's police department from civil service. We moved this article forward after negotiation with and the support of the Carver Police Union. We took this action, as many other towns have done, to improve the hiring and promotional process for police officers while providing the protections that our officers deserve within their contract. The current police contract provides for the same or better protections that our officers receive from civil service and includes preference for veterans and residents while creating a more efficient and locally controlled hiring process. The promotional process, also designed with the police union, provides for a testing process that focuses on our laws, criminals, criminal procedures, and department policies, which our future supervisors would need to be proficient in to be successful. After town meeting and a successful voted town meeting to come out of civil service, our senator forwarded our article to the Massachusetts House of Representatives for approval. There it sat in committee at the house for the remainder of the session with no action taken. This was not unique to Carver. It seems that somewhere between 20 and 40 other communities submitted similar requests to come out of civil service to the legislature with the same results. Each of these bills died at the end of the past legislative session with no action taken. All will need, need to be refiled in the current session. The legis, Mass. Legislature has chosen to ignore the vote of the residents of Carver at their town meeting and several other towns. We've received advice from our Labor Council that communities like Carver that went into civil service by a ballot vote can come out by the same method. Carver entered civil service back in 1968 by a ballot vote, and this is why we are now asking to bring the matter to a ballot vote in April. If the vote is successful, we will leave civil service without needing legislative approval. I would ask that you vote to place this question on the ballot, and if we do place the question on the ballot, that we have at least one, if not more, informational lights where we can present the reasoning for coming out of civil service to our residents who are gonna be asked to vote on it at a ballot, and they can ask questions to us at that time. Please remember that coming out of civil service has been negotiated with our police union and has their support and is in the best interest of the town of Carver moving forward, as we will need to hire and promote many police officers the next few years. And in the current climate, current anti-police climate, we're not seeing the same number of applicants we have in the past. Carver, we're very, very fortunate, our police department and our police officers enjoy a great deal of support from our local community, but that's not true across the country, and it's certainly not true in what we're seeing for the number of applicants for police jobs, including in Carver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's unfortunate that we have to take this step, that the legislature just can't acknowledge the will of town meeting and, and take care of this for us.
And it is very unfortunate that they are ignoring the will of many, many local communities. Falmouth has had theirs before, in that session for two years, and it died in January, so.
Other questions from the board on this? Anyone? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the ballot question for annual town election. Shall the town of Carver revoke the, its acceptance of Chapter 31 of the General Laws, the civil service law for all positions in the police department?
All right. I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the recommendation of Police Chief, of the Police Chief in a vote to hire Christopher Mahoney as a full-time police officer. Chief?
Thank you. With your permission, I could ask Mr. Mahoney to come up?
Absolutely.
Thank you again for some time to discuss the future of the Carver Police Department. The department faces an issue regarding potential retirements and staffing over the next two years. At least five of our officers will very likely retire on or before June 30th of 2025. We expect these retirements based on the length of their careers and the change in the cost of health care for those who retire after June 30th, 2025. To prepare for those potential retirements and to ensure continuity of the department, we must begin the hiring placements now. Probably should've done that probably about three years ago, but we're doing it now. To that end, we have worked with our town administrator and finance director to prepare budgets that will allow this to occur. Earlier this year, we began the hiring process. This included looking for fully-trained police officers who might want to work in Carver, called lateral transfers, and by calling the civil service list for residents who may want to attend the police academy and join the force. Both of these approaches have been impacted by the difficulties departments are having nationwide in finding good recruits during this period of demonizing the police and the good work that they accomplish on a daily basis. At this point, you might ask, chief, didn't we vote last town meeting with the support of the police union to leave civil service so that we could position the town to better... Yeah, sorry. To better able, to better able to hire new officers? The answer is yes, and we just talked about that. State legislatures refused to hear a petition, along with those of many, more than 20 other communities, which wish to leave civil service. I thought this was, article was gonna be first, so that's why I said that. So, so we have now moved forward with the hiring process through civil service. We have had the opportunity to fill one position with a lateral transfer, but we lost him to another department before we could make that happen. We also called for the civil service hiring list, and we were able to get two individuals to sign it indicating they would accept the job. The two Carver residents completed the application process, and once the information was in the applications was verified, both took part in an oral board interview. That consisted of a chief, deputy chief, and captain from the other area departments, along with our deputy chief and Sergeant Bill Kelly interviewed the candidates. The interviews were used to, used predetermined questions to assess each candidate as to their ability to perform the duties of a police officer. From this point, both candidates moved forward in the process. Both successfully completed a medical exam and a psychological exam. Unfortunately, at this point, one of the candidates was injured taking the physical abilities test. One of the candidates passed that test and moved forward. Select Board Chair Mark Townsend, Town Administrator Bob Fensy, our deputy chief, and myself then conducted a final interview with the candidate. Based on that interview and all this process, we've moved forward with this candidate. Before I introduce the candidate to you, I'd like to ask if there are any questions about the hiring process that we've gone through so far?
Anyone?
So please allow me to do, to introduce our new hire candidate, Chris Mahoney, who sits next to me. Chris is a 51-year-old Carver resident. He is married and has two daughters. He's successfully run his own business for many years, and he's been an integral part of the Carver Public Safety Team. Chris is a longtime member of the Carver Fire Department, where he holds the rank of lieutenant. And he has received the state's Medal of Valor for his lifesaving efforts at a call. Chris has also worked as a per diem dispatcher with us and is currently a special police officer, as well as a deputy sheriff, the Sheriff's, Plymouth County Sheriff's Department. Chris will make an excellent addition to our team, and I am very happy to recommend him to the Honorable Board for appointment as a student police officer, so that he may attend the Plymouth Police Academy in February. And if you choose to vote positive for that, we'll send him to the academy. Once he graduates, we'll bring him back before you as a police officer for your official swearing-in of him. Mrs. Chris Mahoney, as many of you know, but he's here, say hi and see everybody.
Chris, do you have anything you'd like to say to the board?
I just appreciate the opportunity to be sitting here. I'm, I'm very blessed, and I look forward to continuing my public service for the citizens of Carver. I'm very happy.
Thank you. Anything from the board?
We're, we're, excuse me, we're honored to have you. Thank you so much.
Thanks. We, we certainly are. I think you're gonna be a great addition to the force.
Appreciate that, sir.
Anything else from the board?
Nope.
Chief? Mr. Mahoney?
Nothing, nothing further, just, I'd ask you to take that vote for us.
All right. Is there a motion from the board?
I move that we accept the recommendation of Police Chief Mark Dufry and vote to hire Christopher Mahoney as a full-time police officer.
If I may, as a student, police officer.
Okay, student police officer. Beg your pardon.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you. Good job.
And let's see, moving right along, Chief, don't...
I'm still here.
Uh, next, we have the, an update from the King Richard's Fair Traffic Study Committee. And after the update from the committee, we will have a portion of citizens' participation strictly about King Richard's Fair, if anyone has questions on the, on the update. Uh, we also have a representative from the fair here, Attorney Walsh, if you'd like to come up as well? Sure. Chief?
Thank you again. Learned a valuable lesson tonight that 14 font is not big enough, it needs to be 16 font for me, not to use my glasses, so, I apologize. Good evening, and thank you again for more time before you. I've been asked to update the select board as to the progress of the King Richard's Fair working group. If you recall, this group was charged by the select board with establishing a daily capacity of visitors that allows for the successful operation of the business, minimizes the traffic impact, and does not negatively impact the ability of the town's public safety departments to ensure public safety services are deliverable. Since receiving that charge, we have met once and began discussions on how to accomplish the task. Unfortunately, our first scheduled meeting had to be rescheduled because I was sick, so we've met on January 3rd, 2023, and began working on this matter. We reviewed this previous year along with some of the suggestions that came out of our act, after-action review that was conducted immediately following the close of the season. As you have read in the letter from King Richard's Fair owners, the concept of a daily capacity is quote-unquote "unworkable" and could put them out of business. I think this point will need some further discussion in our next meeting. We are, we were successful in determining two key points for action. The first is the establishment of an emergency action plan to ensure fair staff and first responders are all on the same page in regards to any potential emergency that may arise. The second is that the fair is looking at alternate sites for parking, once their parking lots are full. One of the biggest problems we had in this past year was where to put cars that were on Route 58 once the parking lots at the site were full. So we're working together on that. The owners of the fair are also looking at different ticketing companies to improve how the tickets are, ticket sales are handled. I can say that the, the meeting was a productive meeting, and we have scheduled our next meeting for February 2nd, so we can continue those discussions. I think everybody involved was, worked well together and very cooperative, and I think we are making progress on an improved plan for next year.
All right. Attorney Walsh, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, briefly, Daniel Walsh, my office at, at 40 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. We, I feel we did have a pretty productive meeting. King Richard's Fair is obviously recognizing the concerns of the town. But I, I think they'd like to also just point out that they have in the past cooperated with the town and they engaged in the traffic study that I think the chief would acknowledge was helpful, but there's more that needs to be done. So King Richard's Fair recognizes that, looks forward to working with the town and the different participants, whether it was the select board, the public service sector, or the, the citizens of Carver, to really make it a successful event for everybody. I mean, it's real tradition, I think, what, 40-plus years in, in Carver. So the folks at King Richard's Fair are really looking forward to being part of a constructive process going forward.
I, I appreciate your comments, but I think that the best way to find a solution to the problems we have is to have everyone working together. That's always the best way, I think, to, to find solutions to the problems.
Absolutely.
Chief, or perhaps Attorney Walsh, whoever has the answers. I, I do have a couple of, couple of questions, I guess, to carry over from our last meeting, and I think, one, we already know the answer to. So all, all the tickets for King Richard's Fair are now dated tickets, correct? There's no more open-ended tickets, they're all dated tickets?
No, the, the website had been changed to offer ticketed sales through the holidays, and that really hadn't been proving successful. The problem is, I think with a lot of these events, and you know, it could point to the Marshfield Fair, the Big E, a lot of these outdoors events where there's not really specific seating, which face a challenge with having date-specific tickets. The tickets are, or the attendance, I should say, is obviously weather-dependent, so by offering date-specific tickets, it would present a challenge to, to monitor that participation.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we already, hadn't we gone to dated tickets, or is this something that's changed?
That is what we did at the end of the season this year to, to get the, get things under control, and I believe that, I hear what Attorney Walsh is saying, but I think that is a discussion that is gonna have to be ongoing as, as we come to our realization that we need to be able to get enough customers in the fair, but also find a way to keep Route 58 open and, and have that happen. So it is, was a discussion that I had on scene at the fair this year, and I think it's a topic that will, as I mentioned, and need further discussion with our committee.
Are, are tickets available online right now?
Yes, sir.
They are? And those tickets that are people are purchasing online are not dated?
I believe, as of today, I believe they're dated tickets.
Okay. I guess the next question I have is, I think at the last meeting, we had a discussion about the parking lot. Could Chief, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, there's been a lot of back and, back and forth on this, but I think one of the issues that I think you, you mentioned to the board last time was where the real traffic problem started was when the parking lot was full. And, and those cars suddenly had no place to go. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So I, I think one of the goals was to try to determine how many cars could actually fit in the parking lot.
Right.
Have we determined that?
Well, as I mentioned last time, we have, we've used the Google Earth image that's above the parking lot and counted the cars, and we believe there's between 2,400 and 2,500 cars that can fit in the parking lot. But again, that's an ongoing discussion, I believe the fair is participating in, and we'll have some additional answers as we move forward with our next meeting. The, as we mentioned, the problem is, once that parking lot is full, where, what are we gonna do with the cars? And I think the discussion has to continue down the road of, if the capacity of the parking lot does not provide enough customers for the fair to be successful, then we're gonna have to come up with another plan, or the fair's gonna have to come up with another plan of what we're gonna do with cars after that. And I think that that's where we're at today in our discussion. I think that we've gone back and forth several times on, on what we think and versus what the fair thinks, and I think we're, you know, still a little ways apart, but we're working towards that goal. And I think a, a plan will have to be in place that allows, once those parking lots are full, if the capacity or the, the need for more patrons is there, then we're gonna have to establish a plan to be ready to use some type of an alternate parking lot and have that plan in place ahead of time, so that we're ready to go.
I guess my concern is, and I don't know how many people are buying tickets to King Richard's Fair in, in, in January, but, um, if, if tickets are available right now, and we haven't determined how many cars can fit in the lot, you know, I'm concerned that we'll sell more tickets than can fit, than can fit in the lot, and that is, is, to me, it's, it's a problem. And I don't want, I don't want to dominate this discussion, so I'll just say one other thing, and then I'll open it up to...
I'll let the fair take that question if you want.
If I could, Mr. Townsend, it's a very small number of tickets that have sold so far. You're right, this time of year, nobody's thinking about King Richard's Fair in October, so.
I, I just wanna say this, then I'll open it up to the rest of the, the rest of the board. You know, there's a lot of possible solutions out there, and I know you're all working hard at finding those solutions. And, and, but there's a couple of things that I know that, at least for, for myself, that can't happen next year. And one of those things is, we can't have people parking up and down Route 58 on a, a two-lane road that's in, in, a great part of that road been turned into a three-lane road to try to accommodate the additional traffic. Now you have people parking cars on the side of that road. Now you have people with young children walking up and down that road, back to their cars at 6:30 at night, it's dark. It's, it's, it's a real public safety disaster waiting to happen, and, and that happened last year, and you, you have to learn from your past mistakes. That, that can't happen again, at least for me, that, that's... I, I'm very happy no one's been hurt so far, but that can't happen again.
Understood.
And I, I just feel really strongly about that, and I wanted to put that out there. And with that, I'll, I'll open it up to the rest of the board. Does anyone else? Mr. Carter?
Sure, I'll take, um, just to make sure I'm clear, are you saying that right now you're selling tickets, and they are date-specific or not date-specific?
I know that, I, I don't want to misstate anything. I know that the tickets were for sale, and they were dated, now...
As of right now?
If it had changed in the last few days, I'm not aware of that, okay? But they were date-specific.
Okay, and when do you start your full marketing campaign where you just beef everything up, and you're out there on Facebook and, and outside advertisements and things like that? When do you really start the heavy campaign?
Um, if I can get back to you on that, Mr. Carter, I, I will, I don't have that date right now.
Okay. What I'm getting at is that we should have, before you start that, we need to have some...
Oh, I, I, I understand.
Agreement upon how we're gonna, you know, handle the, the, if there's any better ways to handle the, the inflow of cars and, and, and customers to the park.
No, understood, and King Richard's Fair has already started working on some contingency plans for the parking. We do have another meeting coming up soon, and I think at that point, you know, maybe we can introduce additional information with, with respect to the plans. And I can say that Chief Dufry provided me with a plan for another outdoor event that was pretty helpful. So we have kind of a structure and understanding of what the town is looking for, so we can be more prepared to answer some of these questions.
Okay. I would like to know when you get a chance, when, when do you start your whole marketing effort?
Sure.
Anything else?
Yeah, thanks. I, I just wanted to say that I agree with Mr. Townsend, I think it's a public safety nightmare waiting to happen. And we're just lucky we have the good public safety departments that we do, that prevented something really awful from happening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Bogart?
Yeah, um, in my opinion, it's a non-negotiable to have date-specific tickets. It, it needs to happen. We need to have an idea of how many people are coming. And I would have to respectfully disagree with the notion that they'd have to go out of business if we don't have date-specific tickets, and I have two examples of places that, that I've been that have policy. So Santa's Village is a big amusement park in, in New Hampshire. And their refund policy, they require date-specific tickets, and the refund policy is, "Date-specific admission tickets are non-refundable for any date that Santa's Village operates, regardless of weather and weather forecasts, even if you do not attend. Purchase tickets only if you are committed to attending on the specific date chosen." And then it says, "What happens if Santa's Village is forced to close? Santa's Village operates regardless of temperature and in variable weather, rain or shine, even snow. In the unlikely event of cancellation of a specific date's operations by Santa's Village, the park's responsibility is limited to the cost of admission for the canceled date and does not extend to any other costs such as travel or lodging." It's a large amusement area, their ticketing policy is laid out clearly on their website. The last time we went and we printed our tickets, it was that big, making it very clear, we had to go this day, and buying tickets early meant, take your chance. Um, a more local example is Sawchuck's Corn Maze in Plimpton. They do date-specific tickets too. And their website says, "The number of tickets issued each day will be limited to help maximize everyone's enjoyment and prevent overcrowding. We recommend that tickets be purchased in advance and online to ensure that you will be able to enter the property. Tickets are valid for the entire day. You may arrive anytime between opening and one hour prior to closing. If we are not sold out online, then the remaining tickets will be available at the gate on a first-come basis." So they do leave the option for buying day-of, Santa's Village does not. But there are two examples of places that limit the amount of people that can go every day, and they're both successful, and they have sellouts every year. So I don't buy that we can't do a "we'll go out of business" thing. It's gotta happen, for everyone's sake, so, that's where I stand.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, do you have any, any comments there?
No, I'll, I'll look at both of those sites. I, I know that a lot of different events handle it very differently, so those are two good examples that we'll take a look at.
Anyone else? Mr. Hoff?
Yeah, I agree with what Jen said, that we definitely need dated tickets, because I don't, we won't be able to guarantee the capacity. If not, because we, you know, we've run into it before, so I think that's really the direction we have to go in, is the dated ticket. So hopefully that discussion will continue.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Walsh, if you could relay that...
It will.
I think that's a, pretty much a deal-breaker for the, I think the whole board, I don't wanna speak for the whole board, but I think dated tickets are really gonna be very important going forward. I'm sorry, Chief, I think I interrupted you.
No, 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 we'll make sure that happens, and I, I think if we're gonna sell dated tickets, we have to have a number of, what number we're gonna sell to, so, I think that's a important part of that.
Yeah, I think the capacity of the parking lots, another number that we have to prioritize, I think, that would be important. I think. That would be important to, to have.
I, I'm sorry, Mr., I didn't hear what numbers-
I think we need to prioritize getting a number on how many cars can go into the parking lot.
Not so much the number of tickets, the number of vehicles, you're saying. I mean, that, that's ultimately the issue.
If they're going to be dated, we need to know what the capacity is down there. I think that's what you said, Mr. Townsend.
That's exactly what I said. Thank you.
So is there a formula per, so many people per car that has been used in the past? Or for the study?
So from what I'm aware of, different venues use different numbers, between three and four, depending on the type of venue it is. If you used four times the 2,400, 2,500 cars that we counted in the parking lot, that'd be 10,000 people. Obviously, three would be 7,500.
Okay.
Did you have any, do you have any estimates on what your, what your daily capacity was during the last season?
I, I do not at this point, no.
We know it was a lot.
Yes, it was a lot, yes.
Is there anything else from the board? Anyone? Mr. Fennessy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope. Just that, you know, I, I give credit to the chief for all he's done in getting this committee together and, and reaching out to the other side to get everybody together. So, so we're working on it.
Could I ask, could I ask you gentlemen to put March 7th, our March 7th meeting on your calendar? That's the first meeting we have in March, first Tuesday in March. Maybe that would be a good date to have a, a follow-up select board. And if you could really prioritize trying to get a number on how many cars fit in that parking lot by that time, I think that would be a, a big help.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else? Either one of you have anything else? All right. At this point, I'd like to open it up. Are there any citizens that would like to ask questions of, of the board or make comments?
I have something.
In regards to King Richard's Fair?
Yeah.
Chief.
This is an idea. Five Tantbury Path.
No, yeah.
I don't know if that's on.
Hi. So my name's Patty Cooney. I'm at 5 Tantbury Path. I don't know if, sorry, if you guys will be able to work with like Edaville, you know, because they're looking for ways to make money. If you could rent out their parking lot and get shuttled, you know, people shuttle back and forth.
Right, right.
That's just a thought, because I know, like, we go skiing, and sometimes when the parking lot's full there, they shuttle people back and forth. So, just an idea.
Thank you.
For us here.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Just a name and address for the record, please.
Ellen Blanchard, 238-
That's not on.
Yeah. Ellen Blanchard, 238 Main Street. I have lived across the street from King Richard's Fair for the last 31 years. And I noticed a lot of traffic starting the 1st of July, when they start coming in to get the fair ready. So that, that happens prior to the opening. But this was really frightening this fall, as you mentioned, about children running in the street. I mean, one, I saw somebody, I had gone to North Carver for a bit, came back home. I was actually able to get my driveway. But the, there were people with small children in carriages and taking the children out of the carriages, and the carriages are going flying into the street. And thank God they didn't have any children in them. But it was, it was really eye-opening to see the dangers that are there. So I hope that this, I know that the chief is working very hard and diligently on this. And I know that, I believe the King Richard's Fair is working very hard on this as well. So I haven't minded being across the street from the fair until this year, and I'm looking forward to some improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes. Mr. Duck?
It's off right now.
Yeah, Bill Duggan, 285 Meadow Street. All the tickets, if you buy tickets beforehand, and they're dated, but people show up, just drive in to go to the fair, what, you know, how are they going to know whether there's, I think that's what happened last year when I drove by. People just couldn't get into the parking lot. So how do you handle people just, you know, driving up from Rhode Island and, and, you know, the thing's already been sold out? Just, you know, seems like that could be troublesome. It seemed like last year, I think I was going to go, and then we got to the, we got to the gate, and they said, and I just live around the corner.
Right. No, I think that is what happened last year. I think there were a number of factors that just brought an overwhelming number-
If you could just speak into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was picking up. Sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Townsend. That's what happened last year, I think, with just a number of factors between the weather and just popularity of the event, just overwhelmed the resources available. So to answer that question right now, that, that is the question, I guess.
Yeah.
How to address that.
If nobody buys tickets online, they just show up, I don't know whether it's full or not.
Right.
And there, Ron, and it's something people will have to get used to, but just to go back to something Ms. Bogart said earlier, I can remember last year, there was a, a day we were off to take the grandchildren to Santa's Village, and it was sold out.
Okay.
So you, you put that up on the website, and I think people, people will, will know. But that, again, that's something you folks will, will, will work on. Is there anything, anything else? Anybody else from the public? All right. Thank you both for coming in and all your hard work on this. And again, if, if you could put March 7th on your calendar, I think that would be a good date to follow up on this.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And meantime, if something comes up, you want to come back in front of the board, please let us know. We'll get it on in a jiffy, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda this evening, our number of town meeting placeholders that Ms. Bogart asked to be on our agenda. And I think we have Savvy Moore from the RDA.
Yes.
Savvy, would you like to come up and join us for this discussion as well?
Sure.
We have, uh, let's see, we have placeholders for last year's 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article 10, 10, which was the dimensional of building heights. The Article 11, the definition of the height of certain accessory buildings. Article 12, the access driveways. Article 13, that was a rezone from highway commercial to green business. Article 14, which amended Section 3580 exemptions from large-scale round-mounted solar installations. Article 15, which amended Sections 3166 and 3347, site plan review and parking lot lighting. Article 16, which was to amend Section 3521, those were permitted signs for the Green Energy Business Park. And Article 17, which amended Section 2230, the regulation schedule to allow privately-owned wastewater treatment facilities as an accessory use. Ms. Bogart?
Yeah, I have some notes. Let me start. We got an email from the RDA Chair, Sharon Clark. And what she wrote made sense. So the placeholder for Article 13 of the rezoning, I, I think can be withdrawn.
Okay.
But the other ones stand, and I wrote some notes about it. So I've requested placeholders for the upcoming spring town meeting to revert some zoning, zoning changes made at the 2022 town meeting, back to what they were before the town meeting, and specifically the ones sponsored by the RDA that, that Mark mentioned. So the zoning changes were made to support and enable a quote-unquote "proposed state-of-the-art warehouse facility" to be built off Montello Street, allowing specific design criteria to be by right instead of having to ask for variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals. In fact, the RDA had a website for the zoning amendments, which said, again, quote, "A yes vote will allow for a state-of-the-art facility," which to me implied that a state-of-the-art facility would be unable to build without the zoning at the time. We did a site visit to the area and were shown detailed plans for a project and talked with a specific developer or tenant, Hillwood. And we even negotiated and approved a community benefits agreement for the project. But almost a year later, nothing has come to fruition. In November, Mr. Fennessy told us, quote, "Hillwood and the Route 44 Development landowners have or will be parting ways." And the chair of the Finance Committee stated publicly that Hillwood pulled out and that, quote, "It was not the economy that made them do it," and that developers know that the vast amount of time and money that would be spent trying to come here and face Mo, Larry, and Curly on the planning board. So we've been told, and another public official has stated that it's not happening. So to the best of my knowledge, the proposed state-of-the-art warehouse facility that was being used to promote the articles doesn't have any active permit applications with the town, and I think something was rescinded from the planning board recently, too. The only change that I'm aware of since then was the reconstruction in the area of North Main and Montello Streets. The uses that were allowed by right before the 2022 zoning changes that were used as examples of things the town may not want to go there, like big-box retail establishments, hotels, motels, self-storage facilities, manufacturing and processing plants, warehouse or distribution centers, high-density housing, including 40B with special permit, more ground-mounted solar facilities and others, and I pulled that from the RDA website. They're still allowed to go there, but now they're allowed to go by right with the higher, looser, or newer zoning changes. Because the zoning changes that were made last year weren't so only that one specific project could use them. They were made so that the project that was before the town could benefit from the changes. But by leaving the zoning the way it currently stands today, we're leaving the town open to any developer coming in and building any of those aforementioned uses. And that's not what Town Meeting was told to support them for, which was the project from the RDA website, two distribution warehouses and associated parking areas. So in my opinion, it's the best interest of the town to change the zoning bylaws back to the way they were before the 2022 town meeting. Any developer can request a variance or a number of variances to the bylaws to accomplish the things that they want from, from zoning changes. They can go, they can ask for a variance for whatever they want from the, the Zoning Board of Appeals. But changing the zoning back protects the town from unknown. It does not prevent development from that area, nor does it exclude any project from proposing a use there. But since the reasoning or example used for those changes has not come to fruition after almost a year, I think things should be changed back. And I hope that you guys agree enough to let Town Meeting decide. So.
Thank you. Mr. Fennessy, before we move forward, I think on Article 10 from, from last year, that was the, the article that changed the, the building height from 40 feet to 65 feet. Am I correct that the planning board already has a placeholder for that particular article this year?
They do. They're proposing that.
So that's already, already out there?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's already out there. So we can-
Yay.
Sort of skip over that one tonight, because they've already, they've already got that.
Yay.
And I've got a copy of last year's 2022 warrant here, if anyone wants to-
Wait, is there a placeholder to revert it back to the 40?
Yes.
Or, okay. So we would have specific, like, the same ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we should probably revert it to 32, so the fire department can actually access it.
Yeah, I don't know if we can, because I think when the-
I was, I was being facetious. I understand. I mean, they can't reach it now.
No.
At the 40 feet, so.
Yeah.
You are correct.
But I think we have to go back to the, what it used to be.
Okay. So if they have a placeholder and it's the same as mine, then I will withdraw that placeholder also. So I guess 10 and 13, I'm withdrawing, but Article 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, and 17, I do believe should be changed to the prior wording. So.
Mr. Moore, do you have any thoughts from this, from the-
I have quite a few, actually. First of all-
Does this help you at all, Mr. Moore?
No, I, I have the, I have the agenda in front of me. I'm, I'm pretty familiar with these bylaws.
I'm sure you are.
I kind of lived and breathed them for a couple of years. And I do want to include a discussion on Article, the article about building height.
Okay.
You know, even though the planning board is, has their own placeholder for that. A lot of the delay in getting the project started was that Hillwood, in this case, and it's probably true with any developer, is not going to spend the money to do all of the planning, the millions of dollars that go into planning, not knowing what they can do. We had to wait for a town meeting. We almost asked for a special town meeting in November of 2021 in order to get these, these bylaws passed, so that, that Hillwood could continue their negotiations with the property owner, Route 44 Development. And those, those bylaws weren't ready yet because of continuing discussions with the Community Benefits Agreement that was ongoing with all of the emergency services departments in town. So we had to wait until a town meeting in April of, of, of last year. And that just threw another four or five months of delay into the project. And, and in the meantime, as we all know, the economy was changing and the, and the economics of, of how people were shopping and with inflation, et cetera. I mean, I, you, I know that what you quoted from the Finance Committee meeting, that doesn't make it true. The letter from Hillwood stated economic reasons that make sense. Anyway, these bylaws were put forth to make the property attractive to anybody who wants to come in and do a state-of-the-art facility. Hillwood guided us in what the current state-of-the-art needs were, but they would be the same regardless of who came in. So if these, if these bylaws are rescinded, and another company comes in that wants to do something similar, they may have to wait a year or two years for another town meeting to put these bylaws back. So what we're doing, it's a, it's a game of, of, you know, chess. We make a move, they make a move. And this could go on forever and ever. If, if, if it takes too long for these bylaws to come back on the books, if they're rescinded, then the next company may bail on, on what we're doing here. So it, it's, it's a never-ending cycle if this, if this is allowed to go forward. And, you know, I think that the, the height, the height was the, the main, the change in building height was the main, the main thing that, that Hillwood and other companies are looking for because of the state-of-the-art equipment that goes inside the building. They need a certain height in order to do the, the, the automation that is required now, which, which means a little bit fewer of the manual labor jobs, therefore a little bit less traffic, but more of the higher tech jobs to maintain and program these, these equipment, which brings in a higher level of employment to Carver. The other articles, I mean, one of the ones that is on here is, it's about driveways.
I think it's Article 12, the access driveways?
Access driveways. What that, what that bylaw stated was currently, if you have a driveway in a commercial facility, it has to be 12 feet wide in each lane. So 24 feet for a two-way road in a commercial development. What that bylaw said was make it a minimum of 24 feet. So in case they needed to expand the width of the road so a truck could make a corner, they could do that. Why, why is that so important that we have to rescind that? How, what kind of a difference is that going to make? The solar bylaw was, was, was an amendment to be, be able to put a larger-than-allowed solar array on the roof of a building. It was not to put it on the ground. It was, that's what the amendment was for. So that allows solar to be placed on a roof of whatever goes there, which is, I think, what a lot of us want. Those are the kinds of things. We, there have been discussions about, you know, getting solar off of, of, you know, stop cutting down the trees to put solar in and put them on, on places that already exist. So this bylaw allows for greater solar capacity on the roof of a building than what our, our, the previous bylaw had allowed. So, you know, I just, I, each one of these is a selling point for any potential future developer to come in and say, this is what I would like to do. Is it going to be two buildings of 1.8 million square feet? Not necessarily. Is it going to be 1.8 million square feet? Most likely, because that's what is allowed by law. And that has nothing to do with the bylaws. So, you know, we have, we can control what we get. to do with the bylaws. So, you know, we have, we can control what we get, and the, the larger, the corporation that comes in to develop that property, the more they're going to have to deal with the town for the things that we're going to need to make sure that that development is, is safe. So, I, I just, I feel that rescinding these, these bylaws is, it just turns around and makes the property less valuable and, and turns people away who, who could come into Carver and, and build a nice development and, and helps with our tax base and, and, you know, just help Carver in the future. That's an ideal place for something of this sort. It's, it's the only green business park we have in town. It's out of the way, and I just, I just feel that rescinding these, these bylaws that have been passed is, is a little bit foolhardy because it makes the property less valuable. It takes away town money.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Bogart, before we move on to discussions, I want to give you a chance to, to respond.
Well, I, I guess my, my thoughts don't really change. Had the zoning changes been specific to solely a state-of-the-art warehouse facility could use these new changes, that would be one thing. But as stated, there's not a guarantee that that's what's going to come in and use it. And not to say that all the other uses are necessarily bad, but we're, I think we're kidding ourselves. If we think we leave these in place, we're definitely going to get that. And I go back to, everyone can go to the ZBA for a variance. So, reverting any of these things to how they were doesn't mean they're not allowed. And if a business has to ask for an exemption or a variance, you know, so be it. That's what variances are for, or they wouldn't exist. But we're leaving ourselves open to something that we may not want and that we weren't told would come with these zoning changes. So, I think they should go back. And, you know, again, you can always ask for a variance, but right now, there's nothing on the table. Everything is available. So, sorry about the economy, but I'm protecting Carver.
Other thoughts, discussion from the board?
I have, I have a question for Mr. Fennessy. Or maybe it's for Mr. Moore, I'm not sure. But isn't the Green Business Park, originally it was various parcels owned by various people, but now it's owned by one owner?
That's correct. It's owned by Route 44 Development.
So, my question is, if that's the case, Mr. Fennessy, wouldn't changing these back to previous zoning be a form of spot zoning?
It may be. I mean, I would.
And we can't do that.
Counsel on that.
Yeah, that would be a, a legal question.
Anything else? Mr. Carter?
I'm just remembering this, this site from, I don't know, 15 years ago, that we couldn't get anybody interested in it. And not to put you on the spot, Mr. Moore, but was there anybody?
Mr. Carter, can you use your mic?
Sure. Was there anybody or group interested in this property realistically that came to the table other than George McLaughlin or Hillwood? I don't remember anybody in the past, I don't know, 10 years.
I wasn't on the RDA at that time, so I don't know it. I've been on the RDA for about five years, maybe six, and, and Mr. McLaughlin was the only person who I've had any dealing with, and he had, he had already started the purchase process with that. So, I can't answer your question as to, was there any interest beforehand?
And we don't know if he's decided not to go forward, or one of them, not to go forward with this project. Is there, that you know of, somebody else coming in? Is he selling it to somebody else? Is there somebody coming in under the existing zoning that we have right now that's in play that wants to buy the?
I don't, I don't know if he has a specific tenant involved, but he has spent millions of dollars remediating that property, so he's not going to just sit on it. We, we did ask Mr. McLaughlin come into the RDA meeting in, in, I believe, early December or late November. I think that, that meeting is available. And basically, he just said that, you know, the, the, Hillwood's decision to back out came as a little bit of a surprise. And they were, they were going to kind of regroup now that the, the property had all been under one ownership and that the zoning bylaws were in effect, and they were going to go out and remarket this, this property to a possible new developers or new tenants. I don't think that they had anybody involved.
Gotcha.
But they weren't going to act on it. You know, it wasn't till the next day after Hillwood pulled out, they, they had someone lined up. They said probably spring, summer, they, they were going to start marketing it again based on, on the, on the current situation.
Yeah. I mean, I think we have to definitely, the spot zoning issue has to be addressed. But going back to what it was way back when, when no one would look at it, I think is, there's going to be someplace in the middle that we can meet to make it a little more attractive, but also protect our negotiating ability, should somebody else come in. It's my thought.
Right. If, may I, if I may just add, if reverting back to what the bylaws are now, or were, not what they are now, what they were prior to last, last spring's vote, there is a lot that can be done by right that we have zero control over. And a lot of what we tried to do was, was make this property appetizing for a larger firm who would come in and do a community benefits agreement such as the one that Hillwood was, was ready to, to do. If, if we revert back, there, there could be a smattering of smaller companies that come in and, and put up individual buildings that are at the 40-foot height that was allowable. And they don't have to say a word to us. They have it by right, they can come in and, and say, "This is what we're going to do." You know, we, we hope you have enough policemen. We hope you have enough fire trucks. But this is what we can do with no community benefits agreement. So, I think it gives us more leverage. Having more appetizing zoning for that district gives us more leverage in, in what we can ask of any potential future developer.
Mr. Chair, could I, I just wanted to address Mr. Carter's original question. So, before Route 44 Development bought the property, and before we had the North Carver Water District, there were people who had come to look at the property. And for one reason or another, probably because of the contamination that was there, and that they would have to put up their own water tower and so on and so forth, walked away. I don't really know why they walked away, but there were two or three people who were interested in it. They came and they went.
Mr. Hall?
I have a question. So, these articles, if they are repealed, and Jen, you had mentioned that the ZBA could offer variances. So, I guess I'm a little confused. Why did we have to wait? Why did this have to get brought up at a town meeting if they could have just went to the ZBA? Is that not accurate?
The answer to that is probably that the costs involved in making plans for something of that magnitude, not knowing whether you're going to get a yes or no, would be prohibitive. So, they're not going, they're not going to do all of this work on spec. By having the zoning bylaws in effect, they know what they can do. That's their limits. Now, they can make their plans and come in front of the Site Review Board, in front of the Planning Board, and, and proceed that way. But if it's all on spec, there, it's going to turn potential developers away.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought of one other thing based of what he said. The community benefits agreement that the Select Board agreed to was with Hillwood. And in there was, were things like additional police officers for a few years because, in the way I remember, because of the size of the building, they anticipate they would need that many more. I think the fire department, someone was getting some sort of ATV-esque vehicle to travel. The height issue was dealt with where Chief Weston seemed pleased with what Hillwood was going to offer to meet that 65-foot height limit. But if Hillwood's gone, we don't have a community benefits agreement anymore. So, right now, someone can come in and make a 65-foot building, and they don't have to give us something to help us reach that height. So, we really are at the mercy of a developer right now because so much of that community benefits agreement was used to help support these things at Town Meeting. I'm not anti-development. I'm just trying to think of everything that we did for a project, and it's not there? And now we're left vulnerable and thinking of the commu, everything that they were in that benefit was to help that project work. And now, all of those changes, a project may come in and not commit to what they should to make it work. So.
Mr. Moore, I might be wrong here. Please correct me. But I think a lot of these, first of all, I, I have concerns about the former Article 10, the, the change to the 65-foot height. I do, I do have concerns about that now that the community benefit agreement is, is gone. But I understand from, from Mr. Fennessy that that's already, there's already a, the planning board already has something going forward in that. But that is a, a concern of mine without the community benefits agreement. But some of these other articles, weren't they, seems to me they were done to enhance the, the, enhance the appearance of that green business park to a lot of different companies that may want to come there, not just one specific. I mean, I know we did a lot of this with, with the thought that Hillwood was coming, but I think some of the changes that we made, you know, the, the water towers and things like that, that would make the site more attractive to a lot of different, different places, not just Hillwood.
That's exactly, that's exactly why we did this to, you know, we, we did at the time feel that Hillwood was coming in, but in fact, it was Hillwood who opened up the eyes of the RDA and the rest of the town to the, to the types of needs that any developer would want to have to come in and develop that property further. So, yes, it does everything that's there, including the building height, but, but all the other ones enhance the value of that property to any potential developer. The fact that they can put up a water tower, the fact that they can make their roads a little wider if they'd like, the fact that they can put more solar on their roof than is allowable right now by the bylaws, the fact that they can put a wastewater treatment plant on site. All of those make that property enticing for a future developer. They, it is not specific to Hillwood. These are things that if anybody of a Hillwood-type company is looking to do something in that scope, these are the things that they're going to want as well.
And I just, for me, I mean, I, I understand Ms. Bogart's concerns, and I, and I share some of them. And again, Article 10 aside, because I do have concerns about the 65-foot height. But we hear all the time, everywhere we go from residents, about, about taxes. And I think this is a, this is a spot in town where we have a chance to, you know, do the, do hopefully the right commercial development, to bring some commercial taxes in to hopefully, you know, help out, help out with that. And at some point, we've all had discussions in here about the tax shift that we have. We're 145 right now. We'd all like to work at some point toward bringing that back a little bit, and hopefully that will help us bring in some more business. Over by the airport, for instance, and I, I just, I think that some of these, I don't, I don't think we need to move all of them back. Article 10 aside, I do have serious concerns about Article 10.
I, I think also that you, you need to trust the other, other boards and, and, and departments in this town to watch out for the town. You have a Board of Health. You have a Site Review Plan. You have a Planning Board. All of those are, are in place to protect the rights of Carver and, and the, the safety of Carver. So, even with the, with the height, tho, those committees and boards can, can demand from any potential developer safeguards to make sure that, maybe not at the scope of what Hillwood originally offered, but to make sure that anything they build is safe in town. That's why we have these departments. That's why we have these boards, to make sure that things are built here in a, in a safe and economical manner. So, you know, following the bylaws doesn't mean that someone, as Ms. Bogart said, can come in and build anything they want. There are checks and balances throughout the system in town, and that's what I think that we should rely on, to make sure that what goes there has all the necessary safety precautions and safety equipment and personnel in this town that is needed there, paid for by whoever's doing it.
Mr. Carter, I'm sorry, I believe you had.
No, it's just, I think I'm on the same page from a standpoint of, you know, Article 10 is something we need to look at, only from the standpoint of the cost of the infrastructure if we had a height, a building of that height. But some of the items on there, like the solar on the roof of a building, whatever goes there, I think it was in, I think it was 13, were there two small parcels that weren't zoned, green commercial park? And by, by zoning them, it made it bigger, that made it more attractive. It didn't, it didn't change anything. It just made it more attractive.
It, it just, it included them. When the, when the original business park, Green Business Park was zoned, those parcels weren't owned. They were still highway commercial.
I just, there's, there's something, there's a meeting in the middle somewhere that says, "Let's make some changes."
Right. But Ms. Bogart has already said she was rescinding 13.
Yeah.
Okay. So, 10, we said Planning Board has. 11 is still height of certain accessory buildings, which I think is important to relook at. And then 15, 16, and 17, they were, they were pretty specifically presented to Hillwood's site plan and the, the actual plans that they had. So, I think 12, 13, and 14 can be left alone. I think that's fine. But I think 10, 11, definitely. And then 15, 16, 17, the wastewater treatment facility was, that was used as an example because of how many people were going to be there and how big the building was. So, maybe it doesn't need to be as right. But I think 10 and 11 are definites. I think 15, 16, and 17 should be looked at, too. But 12, 13, and 14, sure. But again, this just brings it to Town Meeting. Town Meeting might say, "No, we want to leave them in place." But I, I had the thought to bring it to us to ask to give Town Meeting that option. This isn't what Jen wants. This is just an idea Jen had. So.
If I may, Mr. Townsend, Mr. Chair, 15 is parking lot lighting. That just allowed for higher lights, which meant fewer stanchions, which was an economic move. The less lights, the fewer lights you have, the less energy you're using, the less cost there is. So, that was a sort of an environmental slash economic issue. The next one is allowing, allowing whoever is there to put a sign up by the road, like every other business in town is allowed to do. It's not.
Article 16.
Article 16 is about allowing, allowing a green business park to put up a sign because they're not included now in our sign bylaw. So, I don't understand why that's important to be looked at if, if, but maybe, maybe some people think it is. And the wastewater treatment is, is basically for any facility of, of that size, whether it's 20 buildings or two. You know, there, regardless of these bylaws, what is allowable there is 1.8 million square feet of space. So, whoever and whatever is built there is going to need a wastewater treatment. They're not going to have a septic system to cover buildings of that magnitude. So, I don't, I don't think that that is, is something that is, is going to be a make or break if it's rescinded. I think that, again, is a, an enticement to bring in a higher-quality, deeper-pocket potential developer.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Mr. Fennessy, do you have anything to add?
No.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I, I was just going to say that I think, I think except for Article 10 and 11, the height of the buildings, I think the other thing should stay. Because as you pointed out, it's really the only place, anything, it's really our only commercial place left in town, essentially. But the height concerns me primarily because of the fire department not having the equipment they would need for that, for that height. And we can't guarantee they would get a new agreement. They might, you know, we might, but we can't guarantee that. So.
Sarah, you said height. Savory just used the word height in Article 15, that it increased the.
No, I was just talking about Article 10 and 11.
I know. And 10 and 11 is good, but I think then 15 should be looked at because if the building's not 65 feet, maybe you don't need lights so high. So, anything involving height, I think.
It would depend. It, it would depend. I, I don't know what that particular developer wanted for this.
Right.
But Mr. Moore indicated the reason was more economic than anything, rather than having to do with the height of the building. So, the, the lights, they wanted higher so they could have fewer of them, and it would be less costly.
That's correct. And the lights are, the lights are lighting up the parking lot. They're not lighting up the building. So, the height of the building is irrelevant to the parking lot, to the, to the lighting.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, you, does Article 11 raise the height of accessory? Mr. Moore, are you, does Article eleven raise the height of accessory structures to sixty-five feet as well?
No, it doesn't. I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent clear on, what is, what does the?
Yeah, I, I'm having a hard time for looking at it here and, and finding out exactly what it, quite frankly.
What does it say?
It doesn't seem to have a height. It talks about square footage more than anything else. So I'm sure it's somewhere, and we probably, I'm sure we had it at last year's town meeting. It might have been another handout or something like that that went, that went with this. I don't see it.
I believe that that article was regarding the external water tanks.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
There were water tanks for fire suppression.
I'll read you the informational summary from last year. Says the purpose of this article is to ensure that the height of any accessory water storage facilities for onsite fire protection can be designed to meet zoning requirements. For example, if a water tank needs to be seventy feet, a height variance would need to be issued unless a zoning amendment was proposed. So yeah, it sounds like that's basically for, for fire protection.
Yes.
And I, I don't see harm in leaving that there.
Except if it's seventy feet, they can't reach it.
No, it's more for water pressure, I believe.
I think that's the, the water tank is seventy feet.
I, I understand.
Yeah. These were for supplemental. This wasn't the water tank that was going to feed the, you know, tied into the North Carver Water District. I believe at the time, and I, I don't know if this is true with every kind of, of project of this scope, but there was going to be a, two separate water systems, one internally for potable water that was used within the facility and a secondary water source that was going to be used for hydrants and the sprinkler system. And the accessory buildings were for the storage of the water for the secondary system.
Okay.
So they, they just wanted to make sure that they were big enough and you, you, it, it, you know, putting water up high adds more pressure than, than if it was just ten feet high and the size of three football fields.
Right.
So maybe we ask Chief Weston on that.
Yeah, I also think we might want to reach out to the North Carver Water District, but I think, didn't we hear from them at one point that they might be in need of a water tank?
Hmm, uh-huh.
Yeah.
Oh, they definitely need one up there.
Something went through, you know.
Because they, they don't have the water pressure.
So I can ask a question, that planning went through all these changes and, and did they come up with one or two articles they had, or just, just one article? What did planning say on all these changes? What were they for?
So they only, it's just the first one, the, the height is the one that they're proposing.
They didn't go through these, John. I guess that's just one they came up with on their own.
This is a placeholder right now.
I'm just bringing this to you guys to see, and I know we're not voting on things for the warrant tonight, but I wanted to get that out there, these are my thoughts. And in saying, well, maybe we can meet in the middle, well, look, we've already taken twelve, thirteen, and fourteen off the table. So, and maybe others, but this was just the conversation. I asked for the placeholder, here are my thoughts, so. And again, variances can be asked for anything. I know it's more work, not guarantees, but.
Would the board like to take any action on this tonight, or would we, how do we feel? Are we good? Think about it a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, reach out to people and when we are approving the warrant.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, great.
All right. Mr. Moore, thank you so much for joining us this evening, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Savory.
Two minutes, two minutes.
At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess. All right, thank you, everyone. We are back in session. The next item on the agenda this evening is the Town Administrator Performance Evaluation Process and Deadlines. So as we all remember, earlier, earlier this year, we worked on the Town Administrator Evaluation Forum a little bit, came up with some various things that we would agree to evaluate the Town Administrator on. His contract specifies that we evaluate him no later than sixty days before the town election, which, the election's April twenty-second, so that would mean, my thought was to announce the results of the evaluation at the February twenty-third Select Board meeting, which is pretty much sixty days prior. Mr. Fantasy just informed me that he is on vacation on February twenty-third, so.
It's sixty-one days. That would be sixty-one days.
You're right. So if Mr.
I shall waive that day.
All right. So what we will do, Mr. Fantasy, is we will plan on announcing the results of that evaluation, if my computer would work with me, at the first meeting in March, which is March seventh. Everyone, everyone good with that?
Is Mr. Fantasy good with that?
Yes.
Okay. So what I thought was, originally I had planned on February seventh as a target date, but with, with Mr. Fantasy being on vacation, why don't we, perhaps we could all plan on completing our evaluations? One of the, one of the requirements of the evaluation is that we meet with the Town Administrator and, and discuss it with him, give him a chance to, for some back and forth on items. So could we all plan on getting that process completed by February fourteenth? Does that work for you, Mr. Fantasy?
I'd rather it's there, yeah.
You don't have to do it on February fourteenth, okay? We'll just, we'll have that as a deadline. Does that work for all the members of the board?
Feel the load.
Okay, so what we'll, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll set a deadline, February, what day of the week is February?
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, okay. So we'll say, close, you'll, you'll have your evaluations to Ms. Weston by the, by four o'clock on February fourteenth. Written evaluations. That work for everyone?
Uh-huh.
Mr. Fantasy, that works for you?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the, on the process? In, in the past, what we've done is we've completed our evaluations, a preliminary evaluation. Then we've met with, set up a time individually to meet with the Town Administrator and just discuss it with him. And, you know, sometimes he'll have some insight that might cause you to, to reconsider an evaluation, then come back and make your final evaluation, get them to Ms. Weston, then we average them all out, and we announce them at a select board meeting.
Sounds good.
Any, any questions on that?
Nope.
All right, so, so we'll aim to have those completed and, and to Ms. Weston by close of business on February fourteenth. All, right. All right, moving right along. Let's see, next we have the Approval for Determination and Consent of KP Law Pursuant to Massachusetts Rules of Professional Conduct, Rule 1.7, Representation of Carver, North Carver Water District and Middleborough for the drafting of an intermunicipal agreement for the meter pit. Mr. Fantasy, could you speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, so we need to put in a meter pit where the connection comes in from Middleborough to, to Carver for the water. And in doing that, we, we need a memorandum of agreement amongst the different enterprises, the North Carver Water District, the Town of Carver, Town of Middleborough. But because KP represents both the Town of Carver and the Town of Middleborough, under the rules of professional conduct, we, yes, they, they have to get a, an agreement from each party, saying that you, you, you understand that they're, they're representing the other side, so to speak. And this is really basically just a legal document that, that says that, who will pay for the, the pit and, and how it will be done and so forth. So it's, it's not something that would end up in litigation or anything like that. But under the rules, if they didn't follow the rules, they could lose their license. Under the rules, they have to get this agreement, so, so that's all this is. This is a document that was sent out to everybody. You should have it in your packet.
This has been a very friendly process.
It's very friendly, very friendly.
There's no, been no ambiguity here.
No. Yeah, I, I've never seen such a good relationship between two towns.
We're very lucky.
Yeah.
Hey, anything, thoughts from the board? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Determination and Consent of KP Law Pursuant to Massachusetts Rules of Professional Conduct, Rule 1.7, Representation of Carver, North Carver Water District and Middleborough for the drafting of an intermunicipal agreement for the meter pit.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Next, we have the resignation of Jim Hoffman as the Select Board Representative to Capitol LA and a discussion and appointment of subsequent representative. Mr. Hoffman?
Okay, I know several people have contacted me when they saw this agenda item, wondering why I'm resigning from Capitol LA. So there was a, a bylaw that we didn't know about that basically states, "Select Board Member May Not Hold Any Other Elective or Compensated Office Under Government of the Town of Carver During the Term For Which He or She Is Elected, Nor Any Compensative Appointed Town Office or Employment For One Year Thereafter." I, to be honest, I didn't really agree with that because I wasn't, because you're not compensated, because we don't take the stipend, but we checked it with, with Town Council, and to be honest, I don't want to cause any waves. So I'm going to resign from the Capitol LA, and hopefully Mr. Carter will take my place as the Select Board Appointee. So that will leave an opening for the Town Administrator Appointee. So there is an opening for Capitol LA, or there will be after tonight.
All right, thank you. So is there a motion for a Select Board Representative to the Capitol LA Committee?
I move we appoint John Carter, if he's okay with it.
I'll second that.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
You have a motion and a second. Mr. Carter, any willing to, to serve?
I will try to measure up to what Jim's done over the past few years.
One year.
I'll do my best.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
Last year was fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the Approval of the Lakeville Animal Shelter Agreement for 2023. Mr. Fantasy, do you have any comment?
Yeah, so every year we enter into an agreement to hold our stray dogs that are picked up at the Lakeville Shelter, because we don't have our own shelter. So this is the, for 2023, it's the, the fees are the exact same as 2022 and 2021 and 2020. And they've done a great job. We've had a, a situation this year with a very dangerous dog that they end up holding for the Town of Carver for many months after it had been deemed dangerous. So, so I suggest that the board vote to enter into this year's agreement.
Does anyone have any questions on the agreement?
Just flipping through what I mean. When people get, we pay a fee, right, for every time the dog gets dropped off or an animal? But when someone comes back in and, and claims a dog and gets fined or whatever, are there any cost recoveries for us?
They pay the fine. If they go and, say it's a stray dog that's picked up by Carver Animal Control, it's brought there. If they go in to claim it, they pay that twenty-five dollars a day fee.
Okay.
So is there fines? Yeah, there's fines put on the people by the animal control citations.
Do we know, I'm just curious. It can't be a big number, but do you know how much this cost the Town of Carver, like, last year for the country?
So one case was sixty-one hundred dollars for that dangerous dog. However, under the law, we were able to get that money from the person who fought us to keep that dog there after both the court and the, the town had ruled that dog dangerous and should have been euthanized. But they held it over until it attacked somebody else, and then finally put it down, so.
Okay, thank you.
So it can, it can build up into a costly thing. But again, there's a mechanism to go after the people.
There is.
Who, who have that, so. And, and on a stray dog, it's only for seven days. And then they either turn it over to a shelter for adoption, adopt it out from there, or, or, you know, after trying to find the owner, so.
All right, anything else? Is there a motion to approve this agreement?
I move that we approve the Lakeville Animal Shelter Agreement for 2023.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Town Administrator update. Mr. Fantasy.
Okay, first one is the Green Community Grant Award. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, just had received a notification. So the town receives a one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollar award. We are a green community certified by the state, so we're eligible for these, these grants that come out. That's broken down to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven oh eight for the middle high school for high-efficiency lighting and air sealing projects. Thirty-three thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars for fire stations two and three for insulation, air sealing, and weather stripping projects. Fourteen thousand two hundred sixteen dollars for the school administration building for insulation, air sealing, and weather stripping projects. Five thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars for library, air sealing, and weather stripping. And eighty-two fifty, eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars that comes to the town for administrative costs. So, so this is something that was put together by Dave Steadentop, Tom Bott, Elaine Weston. And I give them credit for getting this. This is a nice, big award for a green community. They, it's, these are very competitive grants that are out there, very competitive. And for them to, to basically approve all the things that we had put in, it says something for the way that the grant was written and, and the needs. So this will save money in energy costs for all these different buildings. And, and hopefully next year we'll do the same thing.
Please thank them on our behalf.
The second was just a reminder that the joint budget meeting with the Select Board, the FinCom, and the Capitol LA Committees will be held on Saturday, January twenty-eighth, at the fire station beginning eight-thirty a.m. This will give all three boards the ability to review and comment on the budget, the proposed budget, as, as we work towards a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-four. The meeting will be taped by Area Fifty-Eight and played on their YouTube channel thereafter, so people can tune in and see what's going on. The third thing I have on here is the North Carver Water District. I met with the Chair, Mike Palomari, and they're developing their fiscal year twenty-four budget right now. He informed me that things are progressing at the water plant. There is still one last piece of equipment that has been, due to the supply chain, has been delayed, delayed, but it's now in transit, coming in, and that's the last piece that has to be put into the, the system to start getting it up, up to put on the switch and put it back over to the Town of Carver. The, to, once the state does all the testing to make sure that the water's clean and safe and so forth, then it'll be turned on. The anticipated date is sometime around mid to end of February. So we're getting there. It takes time because we don't control these things. But it's still, if you think back to when they said we wouldn't be able to get to the, the membranes for at least thirty-nine weeks back in September, so we're still ahead of the game that way. And hopefully, with all the work that they've done on it, when they turn it back on, you know, it'll, it'll be pristine, hopefully, and not have a lot of issues.
When they reconnect, is there any disruption to the folks in North Carver on, on the North Carver Water District?
There may be a short, just a short time. They may see a drop in pressure as it's coming through. Now, the one thing that he did say is that in that first, you know, that first day, it may look a little cloudy because it's a kind of a mix of the waters coming together and, and moving around, so. So they'll, they'll have information on how to flush your, your water and so forth.
I assume they'll be communicating with everyone on the district to let them know that this is occurring?
Yep.
And, and Dwayne, I remember back when we had the, the big meeting on, on the water, when the issue first arose, one of the problems was that we didn't seem to have contact information for everyone on the North Carver Water District. Do we now have that information?
We do, and that's something that Amanda in the Finance Department did a lot of work on. Jill downstairs in the, in the Inspeccional Services area did a lot of work on, and Mike Palomari. And you got to remember too, it's a new board. Within a year, there's three new members. And they're, they're on the learning curve as they're, they're going along, but we do have that communication go back and forth.
And is there now a dedicated person in Town Hall, so if somebody on the district? has a question that they, someone they can call and get an answer?
Yeah, and right now it's still out of Dave's, Dave Seaton Top's office, but also Mike Palomary has taken a big chunk of that, where he's kind of become the face of North Carver Water District Commissioners. So he's working on that.
But, well.
And they, and the board, the Commissioners, had talked about, maybe they need to hire somebody to have an in-house person instead of just relying on the small water systems.
And I, Mr. Palomary's worked very hard, and I appreciate everything the North Carver Water District has done throughout this whole process, but they're not in Town Hall. And the thing is, I think the residents out there, they need someone. You know, if they turn on their water at nine o'clock in the morning and there's no water, they need someone in Town Hall that can call and.
And they do, and that's still Dave's office, operates and maintenance.
Is it the new person that was hired in O and M?
He's part of that, that whole mix down there.
So is that number like on the website?
It should be.
Okay.
I haven't checked.
I just had some people ask me, like, who do I call?
Yeah.
And I think we were told someone was going to be hired.
Yeah, and all that, before it gets turned on, all that'll be straightened out.
Oh, good, okay.
Could you do me a favor and put that on the agenda for the next meeting? Just so we know. If it's going to be turned, if the target date is sometime in mid to late February, I think, certainly by the first meeting in February, we should know who folks can contact. I think it's important to get that out there.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question on that. From this transition, I guess, from Middleborough Water to Carver Water, any billing issues with regards to, you know, Middleborough's been paid, everything that they need to get paid for supplying the water?
Yep.
And when people, we have the changeover when it hits, and will there be any billing issues with regards to residents? Because I thought on Capitol LA, wasn't there some kind of software that was to be installed that handled something about billing for?
Oh, that's a new software system for the billing. Right now, they're using like a ten-year-old, what's that, over-the-counter kind of software?
QuickBooks.
QuickBooks. And it's, so they're getting a new system on the, that'll make it easier to bill out and so forth.
Yeah, two things. Once we switch over and everything works and we get rid of the process and everything else, will billing be, I'm going to say perfect, but streamlined, no billing issues, people distributed?
Well, not till, not till after Town Meeting.
So the other?
It'll be similar to what's going on right now, until we have the money to buy the software, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just, finally on this, I don't want to belabor the issue, but I think one of the things that became very apparent in that meeting we had was sort of the communication back and forth. I know everybody tried very hard, but it seemed like there was a, there was a gap in that communication. And I just think, once we get back on and everybody's moving forward, we need to make sure that everybody on that, on the water has a very clear idea of who they call if there's a problem. And on the opposite end, if they need to flush the water, or it's going to be down for an hour or two at some point, we need to.
To get that out.
Very, you know, we're working very hard to get that out ahead of time so people know. That's all.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, and the third thing on my list here is the Great Meadows Neighborhood Well Issues. And I met with the Vice Chair, the Earth Removal Committee Advisor at their last meeting, Van Johnson, the owner of the property, and RICO, the one who's doing the earth removal. And four resident families were in attendance, and he noted that all the issues have been resolved with the residents, and the pumping of the water has ceased permanently. And he did mention that you were there, Jim, for that meeting.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand your last sentence.
Oh, and the pumping of the water from one water source to another has been shut off permanently. So now it's wet digging and so forth. Did you pick up anything else while you were there?
Nope, that was pretty much it, yeah. They, I know they did, they did meet the company, RICO.
Yeah.
Had met with some of the neighbors the next day too, so they're very open to that. So I was very impressed with it.
Everything's been resolved, so that's a good thing. So that's kind of put to bed at this point.
Thank you.
And finally, and it's not on the list, but I just want to bring this up. I want to give recognition to our Police Chief, Mike Dufulley. He was installed as the President of the Southeastern Massachusetts Police Chiefs Association this past week. And that's a great honor. It's, there's dozens of police departments, probably scores of police departments in Southeastern Mass, and he was chosen. Among other duties that he'll have, he'll be setting up continuing education training programs for police chiefs. We always think of training being for the police officers, but the police chiefs also need to be kept up to date on things, so. I would have said something earlier when he was here, but ever the humble guy, he forbid me, forbade me for saying something while he was sitting here, so.
Could you tell us what his title is there again?
It's the President of the Southeastern Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association. So when you see him, just say, "I said something." No, don't tell him I said something.
That's a great honor and obviously well deserved.
It really is, it is. And that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, let's see. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. I have, I have nothing. We have the minutes of January third, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January third, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Just one thing I noticed.
Yes.
On page five, the paragraph at the top starts with Sweet reviewed the zoning board of appeals process. The second from bottom line says, "The current proposal is for thirty-three rental units in seven residential buildings." Should probably correct that to three hundred and thirty-six.
Yes.
I think it was three hundred and forty-four. That was my memory.
Even, I thought three thirty-six, but whatever, it wasn't thirty-three.
No, no.
So where are you, Jen?
Page five.
Yeah.
That paragraph, "Sweet reviewed the zoning board of appeals."
Okay.
The last sentence says, "The current proposal is for thirty-three rental units."
Okay.
So we should probably just get the exact.
We will.
Yeah, let's get the exact number.
So.
Yeah, we can get that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended, minutes of January third, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. And we have the executive session minutes of January third, twenty twenty-three, for approval and for release.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And release.
And release. Second, second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. We have the request for the Best Buddies Bicycle Ride on June fourth, twenty twenty-three, from nine a.m. to twelve-thirty p.m.
I can make a motion to request to approve the request by the Best Buddies for the bicycle ride on June fourth, twenty twenty-three, between nine and twelve-thirty p.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, two conditions I'd like to add, and they're spawned off of a different event that we had last year that kind of mucked up our roads. So one condition would be that they don't mark up the roads, put anything on the actual streets for directional purposes, mileage purposes, anything, because there was an event last year that put arrows on the ground all over town. So I'd like to make sure that that doesn't happen, and that any signage they put up is removed within forty-eight hours of the conclusion of the event, just so Carver's not left all marked up.
Can I ask you a question? So on the road, arrows, so I was told it was a paper kind of thing. Is that true, or is it still there?
It's not there anymore, but I think.
So where's off?
Yeah, just don't, well, the one last year did. Who knows what would be news next time?
Yeah, no. I was just wondering, because I did see those.
Yeah.
You know, those painted, I thought they were painted.
Yeah, nothing goes on the road, and any other signage comes down in forty-eight hours. So Carver's left the way it was before the event. So that's it. Approve with those two conditions.
Let's approve with those conditions.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, we have a request for a one-day special license, the Carver Sportsman's Club, at one twenty-seven Main Street, on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, from five p.m. to eleven p.m.
Make a motion to approve the request for the one-day special license for the Carver Sportsman's Club on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, between five p.m. and eleven p.m.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Now, let's see. Select Board Announcements. Mr. Carter?
Been pretty quiet, I don't have any announcements.
All right. Is both of them?
None.
Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set, as well.
Miss Yuen?
I just wanted to remind people not to forget Chang give thanks, our food pantry. And they, as I said last time, they do accept fresh foods, and they have refrigerators and freezers, and they're always in need, not just around the holidays.
Absolutely, thank you. And I would just like to point out to folks, I've gotten a lot of questions, I'm sure most of the board has, about the proposed forty-B development down near Ederville. Town Planner Tom Bott put a great frequently asked question page on the website. You can reach it right off the front page of the website, and it really answers a lot of questions. It's very detailed, so if you have a minute and you have questions, check that out. And I really want to thank Mr. Bott for putting this together. It's funny, I had reached out to him about putting it together, and two hours later, it was on the website. And that's extraordinary. So I just want to point that out to everybody.
And Mr. Chair, could I just add to that too? Because someone was here tonight asking me about that. So it's a really detailed document. It's not terribly long, but it's a very good document, and it actually says what the town can and can't do, what this board can and can't do, what the zoning board, I mean, it goes through all the details. So I think it'll be very informative to people who aren't familiar with a forty-B.
I agree, thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Fantasy, please pass my, the board's thanks on to Mr. Bott.
I will.
Good. Let's see, the next meetings, I believe what's on the agenda is incorrect. Our next meeting is actually on January twenty-fourth. That's our ARPA meeting. Correct, Mr. Fantasy?
Correct, yeah.
All right, and then the board will notice that the second meeting in February is on February twenty-third, which is a Thursday. Mr. Fantasy and Ms. Weston both had conflicts on that Tuesday, which is why that meeting was moved to Thursday. So you just may want to note your calendars for that. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you, Area Fifty-Eight.